I'd like to call to order the city council meetings, August 17th, 2023, 501 Main Street, 5:30 PM. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a roll call? Crenshaw.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Garcia. Holtmans.
Here.
Calathol. Andrews.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Greenwald.
Here.
Seven present. Item number four is Mayor's Correspondence. Friday, August 18th, 2023, the Montrose Watermelon Festival that was starting up tonight, and it will be running through Saturday, August 19th. There's carnival rides, fun, food, entertainment, and so join them in Montrose, Iowa. Saturday, August 18th, 2023, the Kielkuk Farmers Market is at the River City Mall from 8:00 to 11:30. Rolling on the River at the Grand will be starting at 1:00 with youth workshops. Bands start about 4:00 PM with three different bands taking the stage. Food and drinks will be available outside for purchase. No food or drink is allowed in the grand theater. Item number three Dungeons and Dragons role-playing game will be at the Kielkuk Public Library for kids 12 and over, starts at 11 o'clock AM. And the Sermon on the Mount will be held at the Clark County Fairgrounds, food and fellowship. Come join us as we worship. Then Sunday, August 20th, 2023, the Lee County Historical Society will be hosting Marissa Lewiston's presentation of Lost Towns of Lee County at the Miller House Museum at 2:00 PM. There will be tours of the Miller House at 1:00 PM, and the event is for free will donations. Wednesday, August 23rd, the Kielkuk Public Catholic and Christian Schools begin classes. Check the Daily Gate City and your school for the times. Seems like we just started the summer break and the summer flew by. Thursday, August 31st, the Fotsom River Circus will be docking at Kielkuk's Mississippi River Front. They will be performing at 6:00 PM. They will take free will donations for their show. There'll be food trucks will be available, and they start at 5:00 PM, and they end shortly after the one-hour performance. It promises to be a fun-filled show. Bring blankets and lawn chairs and set up down at the riverfront on the other side of the, on the south side of the George M. Verity. Monday, September 4th, is Kielkuk's Labor Day Parade, starts at 11:00 AM at 18th Street and Main Streets, and ends with food, drink, and music at the Kielkuk Labor Temple on Third and Blondo. Always a great event, full of fun and surprises. Just a quick plug, inside, the organization that will be opening the emergency room slash hospital here in Kielkuk will be having an entry in the parade. We will need people to participate by walking or bringing golf carts, UTVs, or et cetera to help pass out information about the emergency room. It's a great way to show your support for the city of Kielkuk and Kielkuk's future. Someone I work with gave me this quote this week by Harry Truman. It's amazing what you can accomplish if you don't care who gets the credit. This is so true. So as we eat, drink, shop, and everything that you do, we do local. Let's all work hard to make Kielkuk a better place to live. Please be the good. Item number five is citizens' requests. If you have a citizens' request, but there is a line item already on the agenda, please wait to come till that line item comes up. If you have a citizens' request that is not on a line item, and you'd like to come forward and say something, please come to the mic, please speak clearly, and let us know your name and your address.
Dustin Cackley, 3186 Middle Road. My questions are trying to get exact information on when citizens can take out papers for running for a city council. What is the date that we can pick them up? What date do we have to have them turned in by? And I also had a question, do incumbents already sitting on the council have to take papers out and get the signatures as well?
They do, yes.
Yeah. So the city court handles that, so I'm not exactly sure of the dates, but we will get those dates, and I'll email them to you. But we have to put out a public announcement of when the papers are available.
Okay, okay. That's what I was, I've been looking in, been looking in the paper, and I haven't seen anything yet, so I didn't know.
Yeah, we'll put out a public notice when, when they're available to be picked up and explain when they need to be back.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
I'm wondering, this is regarding an item that was on last city council's agenda. What has been determined to be the redecorating cost for Roquette's leased spaces?
Are you asking about the second floor? The second floor or the first floor?
Both.
Okay. First floor is undetermined at this point, and the second floor is $19,500, which is being paid by KCEDC.
Okay, that was going to be one of my questions, if they could cost share that, or if it was written into the lease agreement with Roquette, if you had been requested by the council to see if there could be some cost share from Roquette, since they gave the city a building that needed repaired. It's just kind of ironic, they're coming back to ask for leased space after the fact that it's been, or the building's been renovated. Let's see, what will be the, well, without knowing the space, they're going to use which floor first?
The second floor is being completed right now, and they're going to use that until the first floor is ready.
Until the first floor is ready. And what will be the rate of return on that lease?
The exact details have to be worked out yet, but what we expect to do is to build within the lease an amount that will help pay back the build-out. It may not cover, Roquette has expressed that if they're leasing it for two years, that, that the full build-out not be put within that two years, and that if we amortize it on a five-year schedule, that they would, they would pay two years of that, five years, and the other three years, we'd have to find another tenant to take the space.
All right. The, I had another thought, and it went out as quick as it came in. Okay, KEDC oversees the management of the building, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And they oversee, we have a, we have an agreement with them to oversee the management of it. We still provide maintenance and upkeep.
Maintenance.
KEDC is in charge of marketing and identifying and negotiating leases. We don't manage the building in the aspect as a property manager. The property is managed by the city of Kielkuk.
Okay, and who is the person on KEDC who is responsible?
There are three key people that take lead on this, and that's me, Shelley Holtmans, the President, Carrie Klepper, and then Brian Carroll, who also serves as a city-appointed KEDC board member.
Okay, and is there, is an annual audit then of the management monies?
We report where we use the funds that we get from the city of Kielkuk in our letter, our annual letter, when we request TIF funds, to say how we spend that money. So when the city, for instance, we submit a letter to request funds from the city every budget year, we explain to them where we've spent money and allocated those funds.
So are there any, I guess best way is receipts?
Yes, we have to financially, yes, we file our taxes, we have all of our financials are found in our 990.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Dorothy, also, I just want to share with you, if you would like to see the Southeast Iowa Development Center, I would be more than happy to let, to give you a tour in the spaces that are not leased, but, so you know, you can see the space if you would like.
Any more citizens' requests? We'll move on to item six, Consent Agenda. Minutes of the regular city council meeting and council workshop of August 3rd, 2023. Cash receipts and treasurer's report for July 2023. Special event permit for Susan Skolinski J&amp;M Displays, Kielkuk Football Boosters, Kielkuk Senior High School, September 22nd, 2023, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. Special event permit for Jessica Desha and Travis Miller, Rooster Run Walk Memorial 5K for Debbie Miller, Sunday, October 8th, 2023, at 10:00 AM, starting at the high school to Grand Avenue. Do I have a motion to pay bills and transfers listed in register's number 5356 through 5358? I need a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I have now a request for a motion to remove from the table the personal policy and handbook that was tabled the last time we were here.
Councilmember Garcia has asked that it be known that she would like to continue the table while staff continues to formalize the benefit supplemental. I have spoken with the department head that had questions on that. The benefit supplemental is benefits that are currently given, and we're just formalizing them into a document that can be given as part of the handbook. So I don't see where we couldn't pass the, the policy handbook as is provided that the supplementals are completed and approved through the department heads, and then distributed to employees after that.
In the handbook, as it has been revised at this point, how does it call out to those benefit supplements? How are those worded in the handbook?
So at certain points, we have, we have, so say there's vacation, how a vacation is applied, but different departments have different rules for that vacation, and can, and because of the nature of their hours, the amount of hours they can accumulate. So what it says is, it'll say, some departments may have different work language, please see the supplemental benefit, or benefit supplemental. And so then they would go to it, and they could see it. For most of, well, for a lot of the outside departments, it's just simply what's coming out of the CBA, the contract. And then the, the only ones that really don't have a benefit supplemental, or extensive benefit supplemental, is here at City Hall because, or the, anybody that's, that's non-union because that's what's applies to them mostly in that, in those, in those certain sections of the handbook.
So in the handbook, what's still tabled, because we haven't taken it off the table, at certain points, it says, refer to your benefit supplement. So whatever that decides is outside of the handbook that we're talking about right now. So that can be modified or changed by whatever groups or individuals are in charge of that at any point in time.
Correct. And so what it is, is, is we do have union negotiations coming up. If there's a change in benefit, then we can go back and change the benefit supplemental.
Without having, without having to.
Without having to reapprove the whole personnel policy.
So we don't have a motion to remove from the table? So that remains tabled. Item number seven, we will skip. New business. Item number eight, do I have a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance amendment to Title IX Vehicle and Traffic, adding Chapter 9.91 Automated Traffic Enforcement? I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have any discussion? I'll need a roll call. Crenshaw.
Aye.
Walker. Holtmans.
Aye.
Andrews.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Greenwald.
Aye.
Now I need a motion to approve, to waive the third reading of this ordinance.
So moved.
There's no second, so that fails. Item number nine, motion to approve initial reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 9.90 regarding operation of off-road utility vehicles and golf carts. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
What are we proposing?
What it does is it extends the, the hours for UTVs from, instead of 9:00 PM, it's to 10:30 PM.
I would suggest that we just allow them for 24 hours, seven days a week, because they're the same as a motorcycle, as a moped, as all of these other vehicles that are on the road, and I do not understand why we decide to lease these differently. From my perspective, we're going to come back and spend another year doing this, and I just don't, I think it's sort of a moot point personally.
I would agree with that. It's, they really are, they're, if they're on the road, they've got taillights, majority of them have got turn signals, they've all got headlights.
They legally have to follow the rules of the road.
Exactly.
If they're not following the rules of the road, then there's other reasons to get them in trouble versus a curfew.
As Chief pointed out at the previous meeting, if law enforcement knows they're just legal, as long as they're following the rules, they don't have to worry about trying to remember, okay, is it 10 o'clock? Is it 9 o'clock? Is it 11 o'clock? Don't have to worry about that. It's just, as long as the guy's legal, and the vehicle's legal, then we just let him on the road.
That's my personal opinion.
If you'd like to make that as a form of a motion to amend the ordinance, you can do so.
I would make a formal motion to amend the ordinance, that we allow the use of, that we do not have any sort of time limit on the use of UTVs.
So the language would be that, to remove any time limit for UTVs only?
What about for golf carts? Do you want to leave it, because we're not changing golf carts right now?
I mean, so I guess this is the thing, is if they're following the legal rules of the road, so they have lights, they have all the legal things, how is that differ from any other road-worthy vehicle? That's my question, to the, I mean, if they're, if the laws, if they're following the rules of the road and the laws, should we be imposing a curfew?
Our current ordinance doesn't require golf carts to have headlights.
So then they would not be following the rules of the law then, would they?
It's a fair point, but it could be confusing to the, to the citizens if they see, if they look at their checklist, we give them the sticker, and then they, they feel like they're good to go because the ordinance says 24 hours a day, or?
No, I know what you're saying. But what I'm saying, though, is, is that, is there a, so how would you recommend that we deal with that? Because in the summer, it can be light at 10 o'clock, and it can be dark in the winter at 4:30.
The easiest way would be to allow it for UTVs, because they're required to be equipped with lights, turn signals, and mirrors. I understand that that's probably going to create an issue with the individuals that have golf carts, especially the ones that have golf carts with lights, but if you're going to rework it to where golf carts are allowed to be cruised around at 3:00 in the morning, then there's probably, they're probably going to need some other requirements.
So our golf, what are the time limits for golf carts currently?
I, I believe it's still 9:00.
Even if they don't have lights on?
Even if they don't have lights on, but they're all, but, do we limit the months that they can operate to? I believe we do, don't we?
I'm going to pull up the ordinance here, give me a second.
I probably should have this information, my apologies, but I just, the details are missing me. That's what I was going to say. We're good then. I'm good with that.
Okay, so we have an amended.
You have a motion to, currently you have a motion to amend, but you have no second.
Shelley, can you just repeat your amendment for us?
Yes, so I'm going to motion, motion to amend the ordinance in, to allow, no, to have no time limits on when UTV use is allowed within the city limits.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? I'll need a roll call. Crenshaw.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Holtmans.
Aye.
Andrews.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Greenwald.
Aye.
Yeah, so do we have a motion to waive the second and third? So now I need a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
As amended?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call. Crenshaw.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Holtman.
Aye.
Andrews.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Greenwald.
Aye.
Now I need a motion to waive the second and third reading.
I will make that motion, and my reasoning for that being that they want this for local sports, and the first football game is next Friday.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
On this motion, on this motion, you do need six council members, because this is a supermajority vote.
So I'll need a roll call. Crenshaw.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Holtmans.
Aye.
Andrews.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Greenwald.
Aye.
Now we need a motion to adopt and give final approval of the amended ordinance, and I, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I need a roll call. Crenshaw.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Holtmans.
Aye.
Andrews.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Greenwald.
Aye.
Now we need a motion to adopt and give final approval of the amended ordinance, and I, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Lee County is establishing an urban renewal area within the Kielkuk city limits. The URA consists of lots 3, 4, 5, and 6, Block 14, Estes Estate. The URA is established as an economic development area with a 20-year lifespan. No TIF revenue will be sought. Project within the area is the ambulance facility, and the URA is being done so that affords Lee County additional options to finance the project. The red square on your screen is the area being established as the URA.
Any more discussion?
Just to clarify, we're not being asked to pay for anything?
Correct.
And they're just going to be improving that area with the red square?
Correct. That's where, they're going to build the, the new ambulance shed. What the URA does, if they need to bond, they've been indicating that they're, they're not going to bond for it, but if they need to bond, they can do so without a referendum.
So you're saying they can bond and borrow money to finish the project?
Correct.
How would that impact the people that live in town? Will they be paying?
That would, that would go on the county's debt service, and the entire county would pay for it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Item number 11, consider resolution approving allocation of hotel motel tax receipts to man country. Do I have a motion to approve? Larry, did you want to come forward? I think we have questions, do we, people?
I'm curious why this is on the agenda without us having to have a workshop to discuss it.
I think because of the timing, and, and honestly, what it is, is, is the last request didn't come through workshop, it came straight to the city council.
Can you remind me what the last request was?
The last one?
Yeah.
The last one was the Big Damn Street Festival.
So how long have we been hosting the Big Damn Street Festival?
How, what's that? How long have we been?
How many times have we hosted the Big Damn Street Festival? This is a first, brand-new request. We haven't received, what I'm saying is, the Big Damn Street Festival has been something that we've hosted consistently in our community, a very different request.
But the procedure's always been to be, we brought these directly here. In the past, we've had requests that were not, that were similar to this, that we've always brought forward. So this has been our procedure.
I thought we usually discuss these things in workshop, from my experience. I don't know, I guess I've only been here since October.
Can we move it to today's workshop, or do you want to keep it here?
You can add it to the workshop, and you just won't be able to make a decision tonight if you don't vote on it now, because then we'd have to add it back to the, to the next agenda.
I guess we'll hear the proposal.
You guys have questions? Or are we, are we waiting to, are we going to do it on the workshop or here, guys?
I would prefer that it was on the workshop.
So you want to make a motion?
You don't need, you don't.
Make a motion, why don't I have to make a motion at all?
You don't need a motion to do that, you just will not act upon this, this item.
Okay, so we're going to do it in the workshop, which is after this, so now you get to sit down. Item number 12, consider resolution acknowledging petition relating to placement of the dam turbine in Estes Park. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
A petition opposing the placement of the dam turbine at Estes Park was received by city staff. There were 272 electronic signatures, of which 186 list a Kielkuk address. Staff was asked to draw up a resolution relating to the turbine placement. Resolution resolves the following: acknowledges the concern submitted by the citizens of Kielkuk, Iowa, acknowledges the placement of the turbine in Estes Park is not ideal, expresses disappointment that the Kielkuk Hamilton Dam Museum did not request public input on the location of the turbine prior to choosing Estes Park, expresses disappointment that the city, that the Kielkuk Hamilton Dam Museum could not have found a different location for the turbine, and strongly urges the Kielkuk Hamilton Dam Museum to fulfill its commitment to maintain the turbine for now and into the future.
Is there any more, um, discussion? If we have citizens that would like to come and talk about this right now, it's time. So I have a first and a s- No, I'm sorry, come ahead, Dustin.
Sorry about that. Um, I just, I just wanted to, uh, express as a citizen, uh, thanks for putting this on the agenda and writing up something, I mean, I've said this a couple of times up here, that it's, it's nice to actually, uh, be heard and see you guys doing something, even though I understand that it ain't gonna do much, but it is something, and that says a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dustin. Anybody else? Okay, so we have a first and a second. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 13, consider resolution awarding contract to Everts Towing LLC and Raridan's Auto Salvage and Towing LLC for a vehicle towing and storage for the period of September 1st, 2023 through August 21st, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion?
I'm curious about the dates. Why from September 1st through August 31st?
So that, that's the, the two-year period, and then we would be renewing, and that would start, the new contract after two years would start September 1st of 2025.
Okay, so it's not tied to fiscal years or anything like that?
No.
It's its own arbitrary range?
It's an arbitrary two, it's just an arbitrary for two years, just from the time we got the, uh, solicitations out and then the, the feedback we got.
Okay, thank you.
We offered it up as an individual bid to towing agencies, um, Everts and Raridan's were the only two that responded. They requested a meeting, uh, they came in and sat down and, um, they just, we all, we decided at a discussion that they would like to split this jointly as every other, as in every other month contract.
Have you used either of these companies in the past?
Um, yes, um, the previous contract was with Raridan's and it expired. Um, Everts, it's not really an extension, but Everett, Everett is the father of TJ Newberry, who has Newberries, and so the, Everts Towing LLC would be, would be Everett and then his grandson that are doing it.
And the prices on here for the contract, how do they compare to our contract that we just had? Have, have the prices increased, or are they comparable to what they were before?
Um, they've increased a little bit, but are comparable.
Okay.
And that's, we, we discussed different term lengths on the contract and came to the agreement of two years, just, uh, uh, we discussed five years, but, uh, deci- decided that that was too long for them to be locked in to that price, not knowing what fuel's gonna do in the future.
Okay, I would agree that two years is fine.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 14, consider resolution designating handicap parking space outside City Hall. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 15, consider resolution authorizing purchase of 2018 International WorkStar 7,500 for water pollution control plant. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
When the water pollution patrol, uh, water pollution control plant took over the hauling of biosolid sludge, it was believed that the current grit truck, which is single axle, could keep up with the biosolid production. Due to the small capacity of the grit truck, the processing of sludge is falling behind. Central State, uh, or Center State Trucks of Peoria, Illinois has a 2018 International WorkStar 7,500 available for $94,950. This is a dual axle truck with 4,762 hours and 111,750 miles, and comes with a two-year manufacturer warranty. Uh, this will be paid from the Water Pollution Control Capital Fund, or Capital Equipment Bond Reserves. Uh, this was the bond that was originally intended for the, um, sludge press or the, that, um, we no longer are going forward with. Um, the, the bond was sold for equipment and improvements, uh, for the, uh, WPC, so this is a valid use.
Do we have any plan for the remaining funds from that bond, for how those will be used, or the length of time that those are available to be used?
Um, we are looking at improvements that need to be made at the, um, wastewater treatment plant and are coming up with a list.
So I have a question. How many tons of sludge do we currently, so this is my question, is are we currently operating as a normal organization, or do we have additional sludge that we are having to catch up with on currently?
Um, after cleaning the digester, uh, I thought we'd be fine with our sludge, but we're dealing with, um, additional sludge that's coming, it's a city source, um, but we're just unable to keep up with processing it as it comes in, and we've been talking and negotiating, and, uh, it might be slowing down, we're hoping it is, but we just don't know yet, and we had fallen so far behind, um, that we weren't able to keep up.
So then, I guess this is my question, is why would we purchase a piece of equipment based off of something that we don't know where we're gonna be at in the six, in the future?
Um, 'cause the, the truck that we're using now to haul sludge is a grit truck, and so now we don't, a- and the truck that we're using as a grit truck is basically a small, uh, leaf hopper. We dump our, uh, leaves that come in in the fall and anything comes in, uh, that we filter out of the bar screens into that truck.
However, we did have a contract for, with an organization to be able to do that for us, yes?
Uh, we did, but we thought, and since ADM left, that we were gonna have a whole lot less biosolids, and we do have less, um, but we're just not able to keep up right now.
Then why wouldn't we just go back to where we were before with the contract, where we don't have the equipment maintenance, the insurance, the staffing that's gonna be doing that, all the gas and the other things? Have you done a benefits and out, cost benefit analysis of, uh, purchase of a new vehicle over the, you know, the lifespan of that vehicle, as well as then what it would be versus a contract?
The, the additional cost to us would be, um, probably close to 125, uh, I'm sorry, 175 to $200,000 for that service, and that's on an annual basis.
For the contract, it was, I thought it was $6,500 a month is what the contract was for us to be able to have the bio-waste removed before?
No, that's to have it land applied.
That's what?
That's to have it land applied.
So what is it, what was the contr-
The, the, the monthly cost, when, when we ended the, when we ended the contract, was $18,000 a, a, and change a month.
So then why are we moving, well, I guess this is my question, is, is that we were okay with that before. Why do we now think we need to get a vehicle instead and now?
This vehicle has a larger capacity, so instead of taking five small loads and, and having to shut down the, the press every time we take the small load, we can fill this and maybe only take two loads a day instead of making five, 10 trips.
I understand that, but what I'm asking is, if we before were doing a contract for removal of biosoils, why don't we go back to that instead of buying a piece of equipment? And then having a staff person that is going to have to stop the press, when that piss equipment's gonna be there and somebody else is doing all that other work for us?
We don't have sufficient funds, uh, revenue in order to pay for that contract.
And when that was in place, um, they had two trucks, two large trucks and a driver, um, and it was overkill. We don't need that much, we only need maybe half that, which the one truck would provide.
And, and if we're only taking out one to two loads, the contractor has said that that's not worth him having, having a truck and a driver down there during the day.
I just feel like there hasn't been a lot of thought put into actually what's gonna be the normal operations after, we're, like, where are we gonna be here in a few months versus where we are right now? I'm just concerned that we're, we're not understanding where we're gonna, you know what I'm saying, is I'm concerned that we're gonna purchase this vehicle, and then we're not gonna actually need to use the vehicle because things are maybe solved, the issues that we're having right now would maybe be solved, and then-
The, 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 the problem will still not go away, because that, the, the grit truck is used for other purposes, whereas this truck would be solely dedicated to the bio, the hauling of the biosolids. It, it's not that, that, that the grit truck can perform both functions, it's that, um, we would still need, i- it would, it would actually improve efficiency down there if we have this other truck.
Now, we did have the one company come in that wants to capture gas, and use, turn that into an energy source, and I believe he mentioned that those biosolids were of interest to their company, so do we know, um, if that company was going to utilize these biosolids, would we still need that truck?
I think they were gonna make their money on the gas production and the tipping fees. I don't know the value of the fertilizer a- aspect of the sludge, if, if that was gonna be part of their money-making project or not.
I'm gonna piggyback on what he said, because we're so uncertain about what this new company is gonna potentially do down there, that I'm not really sure we should buy a new piece of equipment right now, because then if they take over and they're using everything, are we gonna really need the truck? We don't know for sure.
I think we're always gonna need a truck, 'cause there's always gonna be solids that we're gonna have to get rid of, even if we only use the truck once a week. I mean, if, if we look at the contract we had, in five months, we've paid for this truck. Five months, $18,000 a month, and like he said, they're coming, we're paying that whether they take out one load or 20 loads, because when it's a contract, they just tell you, you're gonna pay this much a month, period, and we're hoping that we come out on top. With this one here, long-term, if we end up not needing the truck two years down the road, then we put it back up for auction, and we get money back out of it, it won't be, it's, it's an 18, it's almost brand-new. A truck like this with 100,000 miles is a, is like, is the same as a car with 20,000 miles. So it's basically a brand-new vehicle, it's a diesel engine, it's a, it's a dual axle, you know, this, this is, this is a, a commercial-grade freight truck, and so we can use it now, get our use out of it. If by chance we don't need it, then we can put it up for auction and sell it. There are trucking companies all over this tri-state area that would love to have a truck like this, and there's a lot of hauling companies in this area that use this exact same kind of truck. So I don't think we would be in real dire straits to purchase it now, but if we was to go back and go back to the contract, we'd be locked in for minimum of, what, a year or two years, whatever the contract would be, and we'd have to pay that, even though this company's coming in and potentially we won't need all that, but now we're locked in for a two-year contract because we decided to go back to the other one. To me, this makes the most sense, even though it's a little more money upfront, long-term, this is the most efficient way to do things, the most, the most economical way to do things.
So- How many, how many months have you been running at this rate?
Um, it's been up and down. We just got done, finished cleaning up the digester, uh, towards the beginning of June, later May, and, uh, we thought that we're gonna have a lot less sludge, and we just haven't.
You believe you got the plant now lined out and it's gonna be running at a consistent rate?
We're not sure, we don't know. We're still waiting, looking at trends, and our solids coming in.
How many, do you have to hold an operator over?
Yep.
To use a smaller truck to do more, well, you're, you're talking about two loads a day with a bigger truck.
Mm-hmm, and right now-
And how many loads a day have you been doing with the smaller truck?
Um... People come in early and they stay late, and we've been working Saturday and Sunday on weekends to hauling, just to barely keep up with the, with the sludge.
So the truck would help immediately. I don't think anybody's, is debating that fact. Um, if we get six, 12 months down the road, as opposed to what Mr. Tillman was suggesting of putting it up for auction, and if we found out that, well, we just don't need it at that point, is there anything else that it can be repurposed for the city's usage?
Yeah, I, I think, I think that, yeah, the answer to that is yes, I think that, that there are other departments that could certainly use that truck.
Are we allowed to do that, though, 'cause it's an enterprise zone and those, those-
There would have to be, uh, a transfer of payment, and you could do it as an internal loan.
And regardless, if, uh, uh, Restola decides they're, they're gonna try to make money on the sludge, they're not gonna be able to be set up for, I'm guessing, at least a year, it could even be longer than that, before they get all the modifications to the plant and get their operation up and running.
What would you do with the smaller truck, then?
It would be our grit truck. It would sit in our grit bay and collect, um, sand and gravel that come in with the, with the regular flow. There's, there's always gonna be a need for a grit truck.
Do we currently just have the one?
Yep.
So it's having to be double duty?
Um, no, it's, it's just for the sludge right now. The one we're using for a grit truck is, uh, hand-me-down that we got, I believe, from the sewer department, and we use that for a leaf hopper. Uh, we have to, we get a lot of leaves in the fall, uh, going into the winter, and that's basically what it's used for, and, you know, when we have a lot of rains in the fall, we could haul out a load a day almost just of leaves, i- and if it's raining, there's even more than that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I need a roll call. Crenshaw.
No.
Walker.
No.
Oatmans.
No.
Andrews. Tillman.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Greenwald.
Aye.
Four to three.
Okay, I think we seriously need to consider going out and taking another bid on what it would take to be able to, um, contract as well, so we can do a cost-benefit analysis of what we're currently operating at and, um, compare that as well.
Okay.
I think also, you, you should keep track of your overtime, you're having to work in for not having the proper equipment.
I think we need to include that. I mean, that's obviously critical, but-
Okay, item number 16, consider resolution awarding contract to Parker Tree and Excavation Services LLC of Otomo, Iowa for grinding of tree debris. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion?
I have a question, why is this on the council agenda? I think this is an i- emergency item, no?
Um, it's, it falls under our deratio cleanup.
Does council need to take mo- and take action on this?
It, yes, it's, well, it's, it falls under, um, storm cleanup, it's not a, i- i- it's not an item that is crucial, that can be authorized under our emergency appropriations, uh, within the, the purchasing policy, so it has to be approved by city council.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 17, motion to approve a sewer adjustment for Lisa Claiborne for the July 2023 billing cycle.
So moved.
Second.
Any just-
Lisa Claiborne at 916 Palin Street was gifted a pool and set it up in mid-July. Ms. Claiborne has requested a new, a sewer adjustment for the July billing cycle. Council approves sewer credits for pool filling during the months of May and June. Outside of the approved timeframe, adjustments to, for pool filling require approval of the city council.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 18, boards and commissions.
Uh, we have one actionable item, and that is, um, Mark Schickendance for the Airport Commission. Uh, all the others are first notifications. Um, I will make at this point a, a comment in that, uh, having a discussion with council member Crenshaw, that we'll be having a workshop on how we, uh, approve and have people apply for boards and commissions, uh, in order to discuss different items, uh, in the future, so that, um, this becomes a little bit more of a streamlined process and you have, um, more information, but we do need a motion on Mark Schickendance.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any more boards or commissions? Item number nineteen. Council liaison reports. Um, I am the liaison for the Road of Honor. We sent out letters to the, um, existing, uh, American Legions within the state of Iowa, requesting a dollar apiece of, for each veteran, asking them to support us in the promotion of the Road of Honor. And anything left over would go to actually the road. We have about twenty-seven hundred dollars right now. And we have heard back with donations from twenty-two American Legions within the state of Iowa. It's a great project that's going on and we get letters and things thanking us for, um, taking care of the cemetery. It's been great. Then I am the liaison for historic preservation. We, as you know, we deconstructed the Bodden House. Uh, we are looking for, we have received, um, just a, um, bid for, we tried for three bids and we received one. It is from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to replace a foundation. We are looking for stone for that. And, um, we are also looking at the Seven Up sign on the side of the building at Tenth and Main that, that, the, uh, storm took down the, the, um, billboard that was over that. And so we will be trying to get bids from somebody to see, to paint that. And I have spoke with the gentleman that's in charge of the building. Um, they do have a contract with the person that did the billboards. But he is willing to make an exception and try to work with us. He did, said there is some, um, repair that needs to be done on the building. He didn't know if insurance would take care of it. And also, um, he didn't know if he could apply for the facade grant for, um, Main Street. But we are looking into that to hope to replace that sign. I did call Pepsi-Cola Company and did email them. And they say that, um, there's a lot of, um, requests like that throughout the United States. And so they turned them down. They don't jump in and, and money for that. But anyway, we are working on that to keep that sign. Anyone else? Item number twenty, staff reports.
Restola has begun work on the ninety D feasibility Study. We sent them, I don't know how many, uh, blueprints, but they're looking at them and reviewing them. I imagine I'll get an email and probably a visit before too long to go over the progress.
Um, we received the legal and editorial review back from American Legal Publishing for the municipal code updates. We have sixty days to review those and, um, comment on those. They've been sent out to all, um, department heads and, um, any other, um, individuals that may need to review those other than, um, our city attorney, who will be getting those tomorrow. Um, I will be meeting with, um, just on a Zoom meeting tomorrow with Tara Walters from MSA Professional Services for the Neighborhood Planning Grant. Uh, we're going to discuss the kickoff meeting. Um, Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission will be at the, um, August twenty-eighth, uh, City Planning Commission meeting, um, to start reviewing the subdivision ordinance. Um, I had a meeting today with the Great River Housing Trust Fund. Uh, we had two projects, um, here in town that were, uh, one of them was approved, which is the six-hundred block. Um, that was approved for, uh, four Upper Story that, for a hundred and sixty thousand. And eight-eighteen Main, um, is tentatively, tentatively approved. Um, I believe that amount was maybe fifty-seven thousand. Um, city council will be getting, um, coming toward them here in a couple of weeks. We'll set a public hearing for a couple of street vacations. One is for the Water Works. Um, they would like to, this is in Mason Lower Edition, which is out by Missouri Avenue. Um, and then Dan and Ashley Custer. Um, there's a small section of street, um, out in Kitzmann's Second Edition, which is off of Fair Lane. Um, I'm reviewing ambulance, um, but plan review for the ambulance building and alley blending and regional planning, Southeast Eastern Regional Planning. The Housing Trust Fund will be having a golf outing, um, next month. I do not have the dates, I forgot to write those down. Um, but those funds go to the Housing Trust Fund, um, to help with grant matches. Um, and those monies are distributed between the four counties. That's what the Upper Story housing projects were for. So if anybody's interested in forming a team, um, or the city of Kilkup to, um, or sponsors as far as a whole or something, I'll get everybody the information and, um, we can go from there.
So I just wanted to make sure I understood. So you said that the Housing Trust Fund is supporting the six-hundred block project?
Yes, four units.
And those are going to be market-rate or non-market? Or what units are those?
Those units will not be. Those are, um, low to moderate income. Yep, they're, they're income-restricted. And then, um, on, on that, um, I believe, I don't know if Cole has this in his, um, report, but we did receive some, um, feedback from, um, Iowa Economic Development regarding the first-floor apartments. We, the, the front, they can be in the back half, but they can't be in the front half. That has to be commercial. So those, um, the actual ones on the Main Street, facing Main Street, will have to be removed from the project.
So then I thought part of the development agreement was that those were supposed to be market-rate apartments? Is that something that we're going to find, come afoul of?
I don't know if all of those were market-rate. I don't believe they were, Shelley.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're not.
There's six, well, there were sixteen units. So if he has to remove two of those, we'll be down to fourteen, but, um.
Okay.
I, I think that that may be a better project just because of the amount of part. I, I think that he could make them a little bigger.
And that doesn't include the six-twenty-nine building, then?
It does not, no.
Okay, I just want to make sure we don't come afoul in the development agreement. I thought that we did say that they were supposed to be market-rate apartments.
I, I don't remember the, the market rate being in there, but I can check again.
I think we need to just double-check. That's, I'm just, not saying that I don't want them to have those funds. I just want to make sure that we're not going back on what our agreement was.
The, uh, air conditioning unit that went out at City Hall around August second was replaced this Tuesday and is up and running. I was asked to give a report on, uh, the gun range being converted from, uh, private city range to a public range. And I, as I said before, I, I have spoken with the Assistant District Engineer. Um, he didn't seem to have a problem with, with what we were asking about the, uh, entrance being made public. That being said, his, his department is not who makes the decision on the public entrance. The next step would be if the council decides to move forward on this, would be to hire engineer, uh, and develop a, basically a concept drawing for the entrance. Submit that to the DOT for, for approval. And then after that, you would have to go into a full-on design of the area for the public. So, I guess, um, we'd be looking for guidance, whether you would like this on a workshop to actually sit down and discuss it or leave it the way we, where we're at right now and table it for the future?
Well, I know the last time we had a workshop on it, everyone was in favor of moving forward with it. So if we need to have another workshop to just get updated and see what the next steps are.
If you want me to go ahead and solicit for the engineering, I can, I can do that. And then bring those proposals before council for approval.
I, I think, yeah, if, if you had some numbers, you know, obviously you're not going to have exact numbers. But if you had some rough ideas, we could then add another workshop. So we know this is what it's going to cost us to get the engineer.
From my experience, for like, the approval for the entrance and the right-of-way is going to be somewhere between the five and ten thousand dollar range for the engineer initially. Um, after that, it, it's kind of up to how far we want to take the design, as far as the electrical, the roadway, and that kind of thing. So what I'm hearing, go ahead and, go ahead and send something out to some engineers and get some proposals back.
I'll at least do that because, get some feedback. And then when you get some of that, we could put it on the next workshop schedule and actually move forward and get it moved to an agenda where we could actually potentially vote on it and move forward on it.
Okay. Um, the rain that occurred overnight on August fourth, morning of August fifth, has caused the bluff to slide over at Third and Franklin. I'm familiar, it's the big curve, it's, um, that goes around there. Um, I have already engaged two engineering firms and we've met on-site. And I have requested proposals to do an engineering study on that. A, a study and then recommendations on how to fix this and stop it from sliding, uh, trying to avoid another Second Street incident where we lose the whole road. Um, so I'll have updates on that when I get the proposals back from the engineering firms. We've extended the public brush-off, drop-off to Saturday, August twenty-sixth. So the regular during the week drop-off, last drop-off will be Fri, next Friday at three. And then Saturday, the twenty-sixth will be from eight to noon. Um, the Illinois DOT will be shutting the eastbound lane down on the bridge on Monday, August twenty-first. Um, they're doing repairs on the railroad tracks on the Illinois side. Um, they've requested that the stoplight at Second and Main, uh, be turned to red flashing. And they anticipate the work only taking the one day.
Do you have an update on the stoplights in front of all these?
Yes. Um, so we finally got insurance approval on those. The parts are ordered, the parts are in. Um, uh, Public Works Department has started the initial work on that this week. Um, traffic control should be starting set up next week. Um, it's going to take a little while to get those up and running. It has, the whole system has to be completely rewired, but the, the actual process should be starting next week.
Okay, thank you.
Our two officers that are currently in the, uh, Law Enforcement Academy graduate tomorrow. Um, after their graduation, they'll enter our field training, uh, program on Monday, which is approximately eight to twelve weeks, depending on, on the individual officer. Uh, once they get through that, that training, uh, should be good to go and have two more officers on the street.
My only update is, uh, the mayor and I had a meeting with, uh, Insight, uh, for the, about the hospital. They brought down their medical director, they toured the building. Um, they were able to take along a, um, former worker there that helped maintain the building. Um, so they got into every nook and cranny and learned all the little different secrets about it. Uh, they are still committed to, uh, opening as an REH at this point. Uh, they would, um, like to be open December, January. But again, it's dependent upon, uh, some grants that they're looking at and other capital, uh, possibilities that they can, they can do that. Uh, once they've got the, um, emergency room up and going, they hope to expand, um, their in, uh, their outpatient services. Uh, and looking at, um, a variety of different things that can be done. Um, they do have, um, a goal at some point to possibly, um, bring this back as an inpatient, uh, facility. Uh, but that is going to require, um, additional legislation at the federal level, uh, for them to get, uh, some designations. Uh, and so it's only a possibility in that they're thinking about it, should everything fall in line. So, um, I don't want anybody to think that, that, or give the false impression that Insight is there to open an inpatient facility. Um, that is something that they hope to do and may not come about depending upon the legislation.
Okay, that it? All right, item number twenty-one. We have a nuisance abatement appeal.
Good evening, hello again. So Mr. Hanson is here and Casey Barnes is here. And you probably know from looking at some of the material. Casey sent a letter indicating that, uh, Mr. Hanson, uh, had a nuisance in his yard. And he disagrees with it, so that's why he's here for his appeal. So he will present and address you first on why he doesn't think what she saw was constitutes a nuisance. And then Casey gets to address you, uh, to give you her point of view. And then your role is to decide whether or not you feel it's a nuisance or not. And that's pretty much it. And I'm sure, uh, if you have questions, they'll be willing to answer everything, anything you have for them. So we'll let Mr. Hanson go first and then we'll hear from Casey.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, thank you guys for hearing me. Uh, I guess I want to start out by saying I'm actually fairly new to the town and, uh, I freaking love you guys. Um, I'm very encouraged that you guys seem to really care about the city. And that's part of the reason I moved here, to hope to be part of the rebuild. Um, and maybe I can save some time, too. I actually want to just say that I don't at all disagree with Casey. Um, you know, the stuff that's there, that, you know, there's pictures and whatnot. That obviously is stuff that needs to be cleaned up and, and taken care of properly. I guess, you know, the reason I'm here and I, I wanted to address you guys is, um, not necessarily that I disagree with that or wanted to appeal it, um, just to give you a perspective of what it feels like to get that, I guess. It has been, I guess, um, Ms. Broomhall and even Casey herself has openly admitted that my property looks considerably better than when I bought it, you know, about a year and a half ago. Um, and much like the city that I see that I walk every day, I actually made a list of some, some things here that, you know, I, I don't drive, so I walk. So I see a lot more of the city than maybe some, you know, other, you know, regular citizens or other citizens may. Um, but it feels like when you get something like that, you're singled out. Um, I mean, there's, in the year and a half that I've been here, even especially around my property, it's borderline not safe to drive around the block of, that I live on because the streets are so bad. Um, and I don't mean that in exaggeration. Uh, the alley in question here that you guys saw, if you exit one way, you for sure need a four-wheel-drive vehicle or you will scrape the bottom of your vehicle. And so I guess that makes me feel like, again, I, it, why are, why coming after me? Or why am I being singled out when I've obviously been making progress? And it's in a place that is really only accessible to the people that live there. And, um, I'll almost guarantee you that the complaint in this situation, uh, some of the debris that you guys have seen was placed there by them. Um, that's neither here nor there. It's, you know, a small mountain inconsequential. But I guess the thing I'm hoping that resources would be better used on were the fact that I work with a lot of people that also walk. And there's, the whole southeast side of town here is considered dangerous because there's loose dogs that are not friendly all the time. You know, a lot of times I'm walking with my son, so you can imagine how that is when we have to take the long way and we're walking on a hot day anyway, because we know there's areas of town that are probably not going to be safe for us. Um, and so I guess I feel like, you know, I, again, the city isn't necessarily being improved in my area as fast as my house is even, and I'm getting this kind of notice. Again, I don't, and I hope that I don't come off, I told my voice makes me sound aggressive or like a jerk. I hope that's not how you take it. Um, I moved here, I like the city. My son and I actually really enjoy this town and want to see it better. And so I guess that's why I'm addressing you guys and hoping that, you know, maybe you guys can notice some of the things that maybe you just happen to drive by. So thank you guys for listening. That's really all I had to add.
Question for you, um, because you, you said you've been cleaning up your property over the last, what, year and a half, roughly, give or take? And that it has been noticed by Pam and Casey. Um, so if that's the case, what are your plans to continue working towards cleaning up the property? Or are you saying you're done and that's how it is?
Oh, no, absolutely not. And, and if you guys have time, I'm, I mean, by all means, I would love for you guys to take a drive around the block that I live on so you can see what I'm talking about. Um, because I guess I would be confident to claim that my property is not the worst one you'll see if you make that drive. Um, but more than just what you guys have seen, I'll be the first one to admit that I have way more work to do than that. Um, I mean, most of my neighborhood does. And so, um, I'm a. And so, um, I'm a single parent, I work, you know, and so to a certain extent, time, you know, becomes an enemy, um, as well as for the same reason that there's tree piles all over and some of the streets are the way they are, my budget's not always there for everything either. Um, you know, if it were in my budget, my house would have been fixed up in less than a year and a half, it just didn't work out that way.
Mm-hmm.
But believe, it's, it's still work in progress, I absolutely don't plan to stop it, the pictures that you guys saw, so. I guess that's just kind of where I'm at.
Do you have a plan or a timeline for how long?
Um, you know, Casey and I had actually already talked, you know, about this here, when we got here this afternoon and, and she had, and we had agreed on a two-week extension. I'm sure it will be less than that. Um, but again, like I said, I'm not saying that that's all the work that needs done either and so I, you know, I do hope that you guys take that into account too and, um, I guess I hoped for a little more leeway on, um, some of the things or, or suggestion, like I said, when you get the whole packet in the mail and it's got pictures of your property, it feels like an attack. You know, I feel like, and I know maybe I'm in the minority, but an informal letter like, hey, we had a complaint, you have some debris, could you clean that up or do something with that? It's like, you know, a lot easier to digest. Um, again, I know maybe I'm in the minority that would say, hey, okay, let me go take care of that, but, um, even if I have, half the people do, I feel like it saves you guys a lot of time and money.
Mr. Hanson, I understand, like, it would be great to be able to send out an informal letter, sadly, with a co- code and ordinance, that's how we have to, they have to do it and that's just so you know, it's just, I know, it could feel like an attack, but...
Yeah, I was gonna say, and I spoke with Casey, like I say, I, I actually am a fan of this, I think she does, is, is very thorough and does a good job with her job. Um, and that's why I guess I'm kind of bringing it to you guys is so that if policies need to be changed or amended or, I don't think any of you guys would argue that we're a community that's rebuilding right now. Um, and so I feel like priorities maybe need to be adjusted temporarily even.
Thank you for coming, really appreciate it.
Um, Mr. Hanson, he's working forward on the, the progress. Um, I would say that, um, we send out the letters and I do sometimes feel like, um, I never intend for anybody to take it personally or that it's an aggressive way, it's just communication of the facts of the ordinances and, and what the community needs. Um, a lot of times I do have an opportunity to reach out with people, like after we visited today, um, we'll reconnect with phone numbers and, um, historically, w- we had that, you know, connection. Um, phone numbers change over time, sometimes it does end up that, you know, it's kind of 50/50 with the letters and with the communication, we do everything we can to not offend anybody just to accomplish a good community. But, um, getting out that information in regards to the codes is just what I'm designated to do. Um, so no offense to anybody.
So what would you recommend for us to be able to, um, would you make any recommendation for us to be able to move forward?
Oh, um, Mr. Hanson and I have, um, he's already said that there's some things that he does need to rectify, he does know that there's some blight nuisance, um, violations and he's gonna take care of those within the next two weeks, so I think that we've, um, just being present together, we've solved our own problem.
So did you have a complaint or something turned in?
Um, this one was actually, um, yes, a reported item, but a lot of times i- it's not necessarily a reported, um, complaint. I am an active code enforcement officer and I have been working on the 19th block of Tymia in the alley, which does extend me, once I'm in an alley, a lot of times I run the whole alley or a good distance of an alley. So probably by chance I would have came across this, because I did spend a lot of time just in that vicinity. So it is not, I would say at least 75% of my job is just being active, 25% may be complaint-based. So. Anything else?
So just, a little bit of a follow-up. Um, obviously it sounds like that they're working together, which is really good and maybe that, this whole thing will be resolved in a couple of weeks, but I still think you need to make a decision. So if you think it was a nuisance as defined in the materials you've been provided with on July 10th, then you should make that decision. If you don't, then you should make that decision and we can't go further. Uh, if you decide that it's a nuisance, then the city still has the opportunity to proceed in court if necessary, okay? If you decide it's not a nuisance on the 10th of July, then we wouldn't be able to do anything in court to follow up to do any more enforcement.
So is there any sort of financial, um, aspects if we do determine it as a nuisance at this point in time? It is just the fact that we can continue in court if we choose so?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, so your motion would be to either uh, uh, uphold the, uphold the appeal or deny the appeal?
Correct.
So to deny the appeal would be to say that on that date in July, it was a nuisance.
Correct.
And, and if we went that route though, really, if they're working together the way they're telling us, we wouldn't anticipate further action down the road. But it would allow it to have further action if it did become necessary in the future.
Exactly, that's correct.
I'd make a motion to deny the appeal.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Well, I'm happy that you guys can work together, so that's what I was gonna say.
Okay, do we have any new business? Then we will adjourn the meeting and we will take five and then we will come back for the workshop.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure.
That's what I thought.
I wanted to make sure.
That's what I thought.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that it was aligned.
I mean, he was busy all the time.
I want to, uh, well, we just started emailing.
Yeah, you can if you want. Okay, guys. A call to order the, uh, City Council Workshop, August 17th, 2023. Um, we have, we had just one item on the agenda, but now we have two and so since, um, Larry's here from Man Country, I think we'll go ahead and start with that if that's okay with everybody. Um, so Larry, you get to come back up again.
Why don't you tell us what you want to do?
Well, we got down IONL trains too, if anybody doesn't know that, been there for 17 years in business. Uh, we started doing the wrestling shows a few years ago, like we did them, uh, during the street festival and stuff before they moved to the riverfront and we got donations from smaller businesses so we can make them kid-friendly and if you've come to any of our wrestling shows, you know, we usually get anywhere from three to 400 people and, and, but the shows are, it's expensive to put a lot of the shows on, you know, and if you've been to my place, we do 15, 20, $30 tickets for a lot of shows and so unfortunately, some families don't get to come to the show, so with this one that we're putting on, since the street fair kind of moved down to the riverfront, we still wanted to bring back, um, a free wrestling show, it'll be, uh, we'll do all the gimmicks, there'll be ladder matches, table matches, chair matches, you know, if you're a WWE fan or wrestling fan, you know, they'll, they'll put, there'll be somebody going through a table and, and stuff like that, so if you like wrestling, the kids like, yeah, look at him smiling, yeah, he's ready for it. But, but, so we would just, we want to be able to put an event on to where we can go completely free to the, to the families so the kids can come down and we don't have to, you know, charge them so everybody can participate, just like we did during the festivals and stuff before we did it and, and then we're gonna have donation jars up. Um, we just did Michael Winslow from Police Academy last weekend, he's the guy that makes all the sounds, he was just down there and he was nice enough, so a lot of these acts come in and they do, um, you gotta pay 20, $30 to take a picture with him, well, he takes and he had a jar and everybody put money in to take pictures and autographs with him and he donated it back to us and we're donating it to the high school for the, I'm gonna butcher it, the AV club or the, they just, they just created it. Uh, video game club, the gaming club, so yes, esports, so, so he donated that to give to us, so that's, so we're gonna have donation jars for everybody that, if they want to donate to us, we're gonna take that money, then give it back into the school system too for that, since they just created it. So, I mean, questions anything, I, I mean...
So what will be, what will the $1,500 be used for?
That'll be to go towards the event to get the guys...
Okay, do you have like a budget or do you know how much like you're spending on each part of the event?
I, I mean, so we'll, like, this will cover most of the wrestling stuff and then, I'm trying to think the best way to describe, then we'll advertise, I'll probably throw in another 500 to $1,000 in advertisement, uh, if, if we can get help with the cost, we may go out and try to get a name, if that makes sense, we'll try to get, uh, somebody that's been on WWF before, try to get them to come in to help so that the kids can, if you've ever seen our events, like, you go down there and the kids just light up because they see guys that they've watched on TV a million times and stuff and this is, just helps us make the event just a little bit better.
What's gonna be the, um, what's the name of the event and can you describe what it is? Is it a wrestling event?
Yeah, 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 wrestling ring, wrestling ring like you see WWF.
So it's WWF or what's the, what's the professional rank, what's the, like, who the, who are the wrestling, the professional wrestlers and what organization do they wrestle under?
Um, hold on, let me find it, the, the company is, um, they're out of, um... Oh crap, you would ask me that. Louis, uh, this is, Corey's better at this stuff than I am. No, I apologize because I've got the flyer and everything, or the name, not the flyer, but Rugged Pro, sorry, Rugged Pro Wrestling, they're out of, um, ah, they're a couple hours away from here is where they're out of and then guys from all over the, like, it's not like set wrestlers, so it's, they're indie wrestlers, so they come in from all over the state and Illinois, Missouri, wherever, they come in from all over. They come in from all over and stuff. And a lot, a lot of times, some of them will stay in town or whatever too. But it just depends on how far they're coming from.
You see this as a tourism event?
Huh?
A tourism event?
I mean, it very possibly can be. I mean, because people are coming in from out of town. I can assure you that I've, for the events that I throw, most of the time, I've probably rented more hotel rooms in this town than anybody over the last ten years. I've rented thousands and thousands of dollars because I have to put my acts up in hotel rooms.
Have you gotten any support from the tourism department?
Say it again.
Have you gotten any support from the tourism department?
I don't believe we've reached out to them or anything like that.
And they haven't reached out to you?
Uh-uh. I've been, I've been doing this for fifteen years, bringing in national acts, national comedians, national wrestlers. I've never heard from tourism part before.
That's disappointing.
I've been there for seventeen years. You're talking major names, Saliva, Saving Abel, Trapped, Dustin Diamond. I mean, I could go on and on. The celebrities have come to Kiakuk. You've entered, I think you guys have interviewed quite a few of them.
Yes, we have.
At the radio station. I, I mean, a lot of acts, a lot of celebrities. Heck, we had a billboard number, "When Ours Come to Town." So.
So you've thrown these events in the past and, and I have been personally in attendance of them. They're well put on, including the wrestling ones. I remember going from the street festival and just walking the alley and then catching the wrestling. And in years past, you said that it was funded in other ways. And so this year, you're asking for something in the city. Has something changed that has made it that it's a different ask this year than you've done it in the past?
Well, I guess because we've, we've been doing them for so long. I guess the way, for me personally, the way I kind of was just like a little help from the city or the tourism board or whoever we can get, because we've, you know, Kraus and Sons and James Healthcare and all the, and everybody's been helping do this for years. And, you know, I've been there for seventeen years and, you know, I'd just like to see some help thrown my way too. You know, just to make this community event. I mean, we raised, last year when we raised all the money, we paid for all the kids to go to school at the high school for free. And we did that, you know, out of, from Man Country and L Trains and Larry and Roberts and Corey Samuels, we got all together and, you know, just, we've done a lot of good for the community and stuff. And we want to continue to try to do something positive for the community. And it's mostly about the kids. If you know Corey and me, love our kids and do anything for our kids and any type of event that can get, like, I, I consider myself fortunate in life that I'm able to take my kids to do different events. And a lot of people in Kiakuk can't. So this is a way to help get them together. And if we can get, I'd love to see two, three hundred kids down there. That'd make me happy. This isn't like a, I'm trying to think, you know, a lot of people look and say, oh, it's going to be at L Train. So there's alcohol there. Well, there's alcohol everywhere. We do events, you know, I mean, that's just the way it is. And I'd love to continue to do the kid-friendly events like we do.
Is it outdoors or in the bar?
It'll be outside.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, it's got to be, yeah.
You mentioned that you're going to have donation jars out. With any money that you make, are you going to like, do you have a nonprofit or something that you're going to donate that money to or?
Man Country is the nonprofit. It goes to the high school for the.
Okay.
Esports.
There you go, esports. They just created it. That's where we're going, that's where we decided we were going to dump money. Like, we just re helped, we just rebuilt the, the kitchen and stuff and the special needs room. We just did, they just finalized that. We just got done doing that. So now we want to take and go into the, something else for the school.
I guess my only struggle is, is that we use hotel motel tax to promote tourism. And that's where I feel that it's a little bit of an ask that maybe might be outside of that realm in the aspect of how those dollars are raised or typically through heads and beds. I think that's one of the things that I'm most concerned about. I think it's great to be able to support community events, things like that as well. And, and I know that we have traditionally supported like the Damn Street Festival and other things like that as well. But I think that's like, one of my, one of my things that I think about is economic development, the community and economic development side of it as well.
I don't really have any problem helping you with this, but I would kind of echo what Carissa said is I think you, and maybe, maybe this year we're a little past the ballgame on that. But moving forward, I would definitely and strongly encourage you talking to the tourism board. Because if this is bringing people to Kiakuk, which it sounds like it is, you're getting, not everybody that shows up at these events are Kiakuk residents. So you're pulling them from neighboring towns, that all, that should be something that the tourism board, and I like she, you know, her, her comment was, well, that's disappointing. And I would agree with that a hundred percent because the tourism, that's their whole thing, is to bring outsiders into this community. And if you're doing that and any other organization, I mean, the Big Damn Festival, Rolling on the River, all of that, to me, this is just another thing that at least they ought to put in their, put in their notes and actually help publicize that a little bit as well.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
So like I said, it, I'm, what it looks like it's in September, so you're not going to have a lot of time necessarily. But I would, moving forward, you made the comment, they don't approach you. Maybe you need to go, hey, you know, I've been advised, I should come talk with you. This is promoting tourism and, you know, in, interest in our community. I think they ought to be involved in it as well.
Yeah, I mean, you won't, I mean, I'm not.
And I, I really do. I would, I would encourage that. And I, as I said, I'm going to echo what she said because I would have thought they would have at least been interested in putting it out there a little bit. And when they don't even, it sounds like they don't even really know what's going on. I agree. That's disappointing.
And thank you for coming up with, you know, new ideas for events and things to do in town.
I, I, well, that's what, I mean, that's what we kind of do. L Train's Man Country. We all get together and come up with stuff. Like I said, we, I mean, there's not too many places that, not too many places around that do events like we do. I mean, our largest capacity crowd we've ever had was seven hundred people. So I mean, that's, you know, and then we do shows all throughout the summer. This year, we haven't done a lot of shows, but, you know, we're always getting three, four, or five hundred people for shows. That's, if you've been in Kiakuk, that's a really good crowd.
They used to have them wrestling matches out to high school.
Oh, I remember. I remember going to one.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody still thought it was real then.
For the.
Are you going to need a lock on?
The man companies, Man Country has done, I, I, I'm in favor of giving you the fifteen hundred. Maybe just out of it, could you give us some numbers when you get done?
Like what we raised and everything?
Yeah, yeah, because you, you give to things that I wouldn't have thought of.
Yeah.
But they're good things. They're good things. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Are you going to wrestle?
Old. I still work at a prison. I have to wrestle enough within me.
They do let you out though?
Huh?
They do let you out?
Everyone wants one of my work release right now.
So this is going to be open to everybody?
Yeah.
Free attendance and everything and all age groups?
Yep. Yep. We'll probably, we'll probably encourage people to bring lawn chairs and stuff down too, just so they can have.
The last wrestling event that you had down there, that brought a pretty good crowd, didn't it?
Yeah, the one, the one, the one got rained out in the high school since they've been good to us and we've been good to them. They let us take, so we didn't, I mean, we had, I think we had eight Hall of Famers in town that day and a whole bunch of, you know, I mean,
I remember hearing about it.
Yeah, and thank God they let us, so we didn't have to cancel it and just totally get wiped out. We were still waiting. You know, people didn't come because it was pouring down rain, but we're able to still put it on. And we do the micro wrestling too, which is the little guys. The, that's not going on this time, but kids really love that because they're the same size as the little guys.
So basically where we're sitting right now is it has to go back on the next council agenda?
I mean, this is the, the struggle that I have is that I feel like we don't have a process. And it's nothing against L Trains or Man Country and your request. It's that I think as a city that, you know, we don't, we should have criteria in order to decide where we feel these kinds of funds should go. And that, so then we make sure that we're, we're looking at it from a perspective of like, okay, this is an event and these kind of events, this is the reason we value these things and how we want to make sure that we're supporting things. Right now, it's just feels like somebody's having something sometimes and they can come in and just ask for money. And, and, and that just to me is not, I think, you know, every, a lot of other organizations, they go through the budgeting process. And then they go and they ask, and they say, this is, you know, why we're doing what we're doing. And this is the budget. And this is what it looks like. And it's not, as I said, not Man Country's or Man Country's fault or anything. But I think as a community, we just need to figure out how do we want to set up a process so that people, when they come in and they want to ask for funds, we can say, this is the process. And to me, I like workshops to discuss these type of things versus putting everything on the agenda. Because when it's on the agenda, then you feel like you have to make a, you know, you're pressured to make a decision right then and there. That's one of the things I would just say is that my point of context here is, is that I think we need to get a process for these kinds of things.
Cole, can you remind us?
We're going through the process now.
But it changes every time because we ask people to do it during the budget season, but then we, we have something like this. We don't have an act like.
The funds that he's asking for are budgeted and discretionary for these types of requests. Because in the past, we would have people come in the middle of a budget season. And so the, the, in the past, the council requested that we place discretionary funds that can be requested from the city council for these types of events.
And I understand that. But what I'm saying is, is that having a discussion over things sometimes can help versus putting something on the agenda because a request was made first. That's my personal opinion. But that's just how I feel about it. I feel like workshops to have conversations. And then on the city, when we have a resolution, that resolution is for us to be able to have said, we had a conversation. We've had two weeks to be able to get some input and feedback. And now we can feel comfortable moving forward.
Cole, can you remind us what the intended purpose usage-wise is of those hotel motel funds that we distribute?
The hotel motel, that the legal requirements are that fifty, at least fifty percent be spent on tourism activities and in support of tourism. I believe that we're probably closer to ninety percent on tourism with the different things that we promote, such as the Arts Council, various events that, that bring people in. You know, we do fund Main Street out of that. That's not necessarily a tourism activity. But once we've hit that fifty percent mark, we can spend it on any lawful purpose. So that's what it was intended for, was for events and organizations that would likely bring or can be considered a tourist event or destination.
Okay, thank you.
So I did see that this was the last year for Man Country. So is this going to be your last event?
It's kind of like the getting towards the end.
This is the farewell one?
Yeah, getting towards all that. Yep.
Okay.
So where do we stand, guys? Does it have to go on the next agenda?
It'll go on the next agenda because.
You can't vote on it now.
You can't vote on it now.
Okay, so it'll be the next council meeting, which is the first one in September, first Thursday in September.
First Thursday of September.
Fourth, I think.
Maybe, right after Labor Day.
No, that's on Monday.
Looks like the seventh.
Seventh, I'm sorry, seventh. Be the seventh.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Braxton's excited.
Huh?
Braxton's excited. He's.
He was pretty well behaved. You're the one that listens? Okay, our other item is council representation, representation plan.
So at previous meetings, we've had some discussions, just brief discussions on the possibility of reducing the number of council seats. This stemmed from the difficulty we have had in the past of filling absentee seats that, from council members that resign. And additionally, at times trying to find citizens willing to step up and run for city council. So as has been also pointed out, that we are probably one, if not the, one of, if not the only one that has nine council seats. So some key points to remember on this, changing the representation plan requires a referendum. The referendum can only happen with a petition signed by eligible electors equal to ten percent of the persons who voted in the last city election. So we had one thousand five hundred and sixty people vote in the last city election. So we would need one hundred and fifty-six valid signatures. Eligible electors is anyone over the age of eighteen that resides within the corporate city limits of Kiakuk. They do not have to be a registered voter, just eligible to vote should they choose, choose to register. To get the referendum on the ballot for this November, the petition must be turned into the county order by September twenty-first.
From my understanding, that is not correct, actually. We do not have to do a petition. I contacted the Dennis, Denise Frazee, the county.
She contacted me as well. And I looked up the two, the two citations in state code. And what it is, is they apply to cities under five hundred and cities under five thousand.
Okay, so then it is that we do have to do the petition. I just wanted to make sure, because I was like, she, I had my notes. I was like, with me soon. So she was supposed to get back to me about that because I asked her about that specifically. So.
She contacted me when I looked up the sections because in towns smaller than five hundred, I mean, what it is, 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 if everybody took their turn, it would be great, but they don't. So they end up, so they were able to reduce it from five to three council members, and they wouldn't have to have the petition. And for under five thousand, it's the same thing.
So then if we're over five thousand, you have to do.
You have to do, you have to do the petition and the referendum.
And so then what it was, what, okay, sorry then. Continue on, please. What are the numbers that we'd have to get then?
We have to have one hundred and fifty-six valid signatures.
And valid signatures? Okay, so then we, also, one of the things I would like to say though is, is that personally, I would like to move forward with it. But then we would have, can we work with the city clerk and the county attorney to draft that language for a possible?
What it is, is, is yes, we can work to get the, the language drafted. I've already consulted with Lynch Dallas.
Lynch Dallas, perfect.
Lynch Dallas. And they can draft the, the language and get everything ready that's necessary for the filing and everything like that. The council would need to decide the representation plan that they want to place on the ballot, which is the next topic.
Perfect.
Okay. So the representation plan options provided by the state, so this is coming from the state code. You can have an election at large, at large without ward residency requirements for, for the members. So if you decided that you wanted to reduce the number of council, council seats to five, you can make it at large, meaning there's no wards. And the way you would set up the election is that anybody that wanted to run would turn in their papers and the top number of vote getters, so if there were three seats available, the top three vote getters would then be the, the council members seated. If you end up with a tie, you would have to then have an additional runoff. You can have an election at large, but with equal population wards, residency requirements for the members, which is what we have now. We would just reduce the number of wards. Or you could keep an even number of wards and only have one at-large seat. Elect from single member, equal population wards in which the elections of each ward shall select one member that must reside within that ward. So you'd have no at-large. And then an election of specified number of at-large and a specified number of members from single member, equal population wards. So there's your choices. And then we would, we would write up a, the lawyers would write up a language that would go on top of the petition as well. So that everybody knew. And then that would be the ballot language that would go before the, the voting public in November.
I have a couple of comments and questions. My concern with having straight at-large with no ward representation is you run the chance of potentially having a section of the town that isn't really represented because nobody lives there. And so then all of a sudden, we end up for, for comparison purposes, Chicago and Illinois. Chicago runs Illinois because they get all the votes. The rest of Illinois suffers because of that. If we, and in turn, did an election where we didn't require people from different sections of town to be on council, then pretty quick, we could do the same thing. You'd have potentially people that were concerned about one section of town, but the other section, because it wasn't really represented. Nobody on the council really lived in that area. That would, to me, the only two that would even remotely qualify or that I'd ever vote for would be three or four. My other question is, is if we were to start changing ward numbers and reducing from seven wards to a different number. and reducing from seven wards to a different number, what's that going to cost the city in redistricting and doing all that? Because this isn't going to come at, just, you know, we're not going to just do it, and this is going to cost them serious money if we're going to start changing our number of wards.
No, it does not cost us.
Serious money at all.
We would, we would just redraw our wards and submit them to the state. That's a free process. The only thing that cost, yeah. The only thing that would cost us is that at the November election, there would be a little bit more, a little bit more cost for the extra ballot measure.
Now with the census data and everything, they can simply just plug it in, and it will spit out like wards by population. And we could look at different maps and decide which we like.
So for example, this is, what you have on your screen was something I drew up back when we were discussing this as part of the census. This is from a program that the state provides to draw your ward maps. And so you would draw in the lines, and then it gives you the population of each of those wards. And so then you can look to see, and then it'll also give it down below if you're within the standard deviation. You can have a 10% standard, 10% deviation either on the plus side or the minus side of the target population for your wards. So all I would do is go in, draw an additional map, and then submit it through the Secretary of State. There would be some work with the county to make sure it lines up on their precincts. At the, the last time we discussed this as part of the census, the county auditor did say that if we went to a smaller number of wards, it would mean that they could reduce the number of precincts and potentially save money that way. So it's not something that's going to cost us thousands of dollars. It'll cost us the attorney and a little bit more on the election.
Well, but then in the future, less on the elections, because we'd have less precincts.
Yeah, in two years. So what it is, is if it passes in November, it would go into effect the next city election, so 2025. And at that time, all of the new seats would be up for election, with a certain number of them being for two years and a certain number of them being for four years. The ones that were for two years would then hit the next election cycle to be elected for four years, so everybody is then on a four-year rotation.
So we wouldn't be changing anything this election?
You would not change anything this election. Now, what I will tell you is, had we started this earlier, we could have had a special election that then would have started the process this November. But we're too far down the road.
That's okay.
So it would be in November.
I think it should be on the general election.
You had your hand up, Dorothy. Come on up.
Come on up, Dorothy.
Dorothy Cackley, 620 J Street. In your memo to the council for tonight, it says, "Staff was asked about the process to change the number of council seats." I would like very much to know the name of the individual or individuals who made that request of you to do that research.
That would be Councilmember Olman.
Yes.
Okay. Question number two. I will direct to Ms. Olman. What is the reason that you feel there is a need to change the number of council seats?
Currently, I feel that it is difficult to find volunteers, and it's difficult to find elected officials, and that having nine city council people with seven wards has been difficult for us to fill. For instance, I know that the mayor had to call, I mean, how many people did you need to have to call to see a ward to?
Between 30 and 40.
To find a volunteer for somebody who wanted to represent ward two. And in the past, we have had issues with representation, with people that are council people showing up. And in a community of 10,000, 9,900, if you think about it. And how many people do we have that are registered voters? How many people vote?
How many, how many people do we have that voted the last election? 1,560.
So we have four.
That's just how many voted the last election. That's not the number of potential voters.
Well, I know that. I worked the elections. But what I'm saying is, is that I think that we could find people that are more willing to serve, and we could represent all of the people in our population with less people. I would recommend five, personally. But most communities have seven. Not most communities, I should say. Most communities have five or seven, or they might have six with somebody who becomes a mayor that then becomes a non-voting member. There's a lot of different ways that you can do that. But I think it's just difficult for a town our size to find nine people that are able to serve at this point in time, personally.
Okay, I kind of disagree with that. I think that we have people that can do it, whether they're encouraged to do it or not. And then I think maybe some of the displeasure may be in the attendance of those who have been elected to fill positions. Mr. Tillman graciously came forward when there was a vacancy in his ward. Evidently, you were prodded and prodded to do so by the statements here.
I'm not prodded, no.
But I, I think that if anything needs to be done in regards to council members, is put some bite into, when you take the position, you do it on a consistent basis and make every effort to be in attendance at all of the meetings.
I've been at every single meeting since I've been a council member.
I'm not pointing out you, but I know that there have been times that maybe a vote was delayed because not having the total number of people present to be able to validate the vote, if I'm correct on that. I made some quick notes after researching this this afternoon. Option one, at-large, without ward residence requirements, should immediately be eliminated. I agree toward what I think Mr. Tillman was alluding to, that if all of the votes are at-large, that could make one section of the town responsible for all of the decisions regarding the town. It could allow all council persons to come from one geographic or socioeconomic area, thus not having a fair demographic representation of the decision-makers. Option number two, I had a different interpretation than Mr. O'Donnell. It says, "election at-large, but with equal-population ward residence requirements for the members." I took that to mean that people in Ward Seven could vote for the ward council person in Ward One. And how did you describe it, Mr. O'Donnell?
Well, that one is kind of a hybrid, and I may stand corrected with what you have. But it's an election at-large, but with equal-population ward residence requirements for the members. For me, that sounds like they still have to live within the ward.
The person, but?
I wouldn't, let's put it this way, I wouldn't recommend number two.
At-large voting means that anybody could vote for a different ward.
Correct.
All seven wards would be on the agenda.
If it's elected at-large, yes.
Okay. Option three, single person voted in for each city ward, voted on by their ward residents. And that eliminates, then, the possibility of at-large council people.
Correct.
So in essence, option number four is how we currently stand, but would be, you would be deciding number of at-large.
And number of wards.
Councilmen, and the number of wards.
Correct.
Okay. So will the council person who made this request be the one to be responsible for passing the petitions? Will the council be responsible for passing the petitions, since this is something that they're going to be voting on?
If, if the council wants to move forward at the position, staff would be directed to draw them up and place them in appropriate places, and then collect them.
So I have a question. Does it have to be a council, does the council have to agree to move forward with the petition, or could somebody in the community just move forward with a petition?
Someone in the community certainly could do so. But if, in our discussions right now, it's been the council wanting to do this. So if the council wanted to do this, staff would certainly go ahead and do the necessary steps.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I guess I'm not obligated to have you do this, but I would like to know the council members who support making changes to this. With a show of hands. Right.
And I would say I'm undecided. I'm still taking in information on this right now.
Okay. I have one last question. It seems in recent past, the council has responded to acting in regard to petitions that have been put forward by people from the community. As in, doing away with the 10-mile radius into Illinois and Iowa for, or Illinois and Missouri for public, or city employees. So if at the same time, the petitions come to you to place this on the ballot, and you have another petition submitted saying people are happy with the system as it is now, would you not have to reassess your thinking and determination of the
The petition.
petitions for the ballot?
The petition asking for the ballot measure would take precedence, because that is something that's covered under Iowa law. If we are presented with that, we have to move forward with it.
So you're going to, you're going to ignore the will of the people that might come up with more than 156 signatures?
Well, the will of the people then can then go to the ballot box and vote the measure down.
Okay, all right. But we still would have the option to submit the petitions?
Certainly. You could, you can, that can be taken into consideration. But because Iowa law covers this petition specifically, in order to change the form of government or representation plan, then that takes precedence over the other petition that's non-binding.
Well, my only statement that I can make at this time, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you.
I guess one of the things that I would just say is, I would just like to take it to the voters and have the voters decide, because I hear a lot of people that say that they would really like to have a more efficient government. I guess my proposal would stay with option four, and to have two at-larges and one, and three wards, so that people continue to have three people that represent them. In the aspect of, like, you still have two at-larges that are representing the whole community, but then you also still have your ward representation as well. So that representation does not change in the aspect that they still have three city council members that they can contact to be able to talk to about what their beliefs are and their opinions are.
So as part of, when we, when we looked at this during the census time, as I said, this is a five-ward map, and it's a little, it's a little small, but it shows approximately the areas and approximately the number of people that you would represent as ward-only. And this one is a three-ward map. And the target population on that being 9,900 is 3,300 people each.
I'd like to make a comment about what Shelley just said. I strongly think, and I, this is how I feel, and I've been called by people. I don't think that people in town only have three council members they can call. I've been called by people that are not in my ward, and realistically, all of our numbers, except for maybe Tyler's here because he's new, he hasn't been on the site yet. But I've had people call me that are not in my ward, just because I'm on the city council. So in regard, and this is, this is just in answer to your, or response to your statement, I don't think the number of wards or the number of at-large has effect on who they can call. Anybody can call any city council member. I get as many calls from people outside my ward as I do inside my ward, just because I know I'm on the council. And to me, and the only reason I say that is because I don't want people, and this is more for people that are, that are listening, or the city council knows this, but you're not required, and you're not only obligated to handle, you know, I can't, well, I'm sorry, you're not in my ward, I can't talk to you. And so I don't ever want somebody to think, oh, well, I need to call somebody, but my city council member doesn't answer his phone, or I can't ever seem to connect with him because of time schedules, and I don't have any to call. They can call any of us at any, 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 any day of the week. And I think all of us have that same opinion. And I don't think that's what you're saying, Shelley.
No, that's not what I was saying. What I was saying is that they have a choice to vote for you. That's what I meant.
I know how you feel, and I know that, but I don't want, I don't want that to be the takeaway from here. Somebody says, oh, well, she said that, now maybe I'm not going to call. These guys are not in my ward. And so I just want to, I want to stress that, that you don't have to be in my ward to contact me. You don't have to be in Shelley's ward to contact her. If, you know, if somebody wants to talk to somebody about something going on, I like that I get a phone call and say, hey, well, I also talked with city council member so-and-so, and I called and talked with Cole about this. I like that they're reaching out to more than maybe just me. And I would encourage everybody to do that, whether it's email, phone calls, whatever. That's, that's how we know, and I stress this, and I say this all the time. I'm here because I want to do what the people would like me to do. And that's, that's been, you know, I've made this statement, I think even when I had my interview, I tell everybody that, just because I want to do something a certain way. If I get five calls, and they're all wanting me to vote a different way about that, then I really need to vote the way they told me to vote, because I'm supposed to be representing the city of Keokuk. It's not what Dan Tillman wants, it's what the city of Keokuk wants. And that's what I want to reiterate, and I hope we all have that, and I think we do. But that's, for me, that is why I'm here, is to do just that, represent the city.
And thank you for sharing that, Dan. But no, that's not what I meant at all. What I'm just saying is, is that you can't hold an elected official accountable if you can't vote for them. So that's the reason I was framing it up in that way, is that if somebody is unhappy with somebody, then they have the right to be able to choose for those three people on a ballot. One of the, one of the concerns that, one of the things I would be interested in knowing is, how often do we have actual contested races? Because how often do we have contested races? Meaning that we actually have two candidates?
I did that.
You did. I think you were the only one that had, well, and then there was an at-large, no, there was the mayor and that Ward One at the last election. And I think if we would look at that historical data, it'd be interesting to see how often we have had contested races, so people have a choice that they're making versus that somebody volunteers, so they're put in that position as well.
I'd like to clear something up, too. I did call quite a few people to get somebody to take the council seat. But I will tell you that if I'd have started at the other end of the ward, and I'd have asked Tyler, like the third or fourth person, Tyler stepped up like this. He was, he was like that. Yes, you know, let me think about it overnight, but it sounds really good, that, like that. So I just started at the wrong end. I just got a lot of people that said no, and if I'd have started at the other end and known Tyler was there, I mean, it was like that. And so, you know, not everybody, not everybody that I talked to was unkind, and not everybody that I talked to didn't say they wouldn't do it. A lot of people said, well, you know, not right now, or that kind of stuff. So it wasn't a bad experience calling these people. But I'm kind of on the other side of the fence, and I don't mean to be, you know, to say that anybody's right or wrong, but I kind of don't feel like five people is enough for representation for the city of Keokuk. I just don't think that we need to think about that because, I don't know, maybe, maybe I would be willing, I mean, maybe I'd be happier with seven, as opposed to going clear down to five, but I, I don't know. I think at nine, you're representing about 1,100 people apiece, and when you go down to five and it's 3,300, I think that that's a lot of phone calls and a lot of people that are relying on you as opposed to the other way around. However, I only have a vote at the polls, so that's just my opinion.
Well, and that's my, well, I mean, and I, I say five because that's my opinion, so, you know, but I'm not willing, not willing to negotiate or have a conversation about how the rest of the council feels about that. As I was going to say, I would just really like to take something to the people so that they can say what their thoughts are. And I think that then we can make a decision as to what are we comfortable with proposing, and then during that election, there's, you know, we actually know what the people think and say. And if they say no, then they say no, and that's great. You know, then that means that they at least had a choice in the matter.
I personally like the seven option, the five wards and then keep two at-large. And I feel like we're not drastically making a big change because we're only reducing it by two versus the five. But I like the seven option.
And I can get on board with that.
Can I ask a question?
Please. Yeah, come up here.
Yeah.
Would it be helpful if, like, the delegate created a poll to ask people, or would that not be allowed?
Well, at, at this point, because we have to have the petition turned in by September 21st to be able to be on the election, right? You either, we either start the process now, or somehow start the process now, or it's not going to make it on the, on the ballot.
Could it be like a theoretical thing of like, oh, I mean, and obviously not scientific, which is asking?
You, you certainly can, but again.
It might be interesting to know. You can do whatever you want to do, really, Erica.
You can certainly do whatever you want. What I'm saying, though, is, is that we can't necessarily wait for that poll.
Totally. Yeah. I mean, very unscientific, but if that would be helpful, just to look at and see what people think.
Now, for clarification, does the petition have to have the five and two for seven, or three and two for five on it? Or does the petition just say, reevaluate it, and then something's drafted for?
The petition, i- if we were to put the petition out, I'd want the ballot language on there, okay? But if someone in the, in the, in, a citizen wanted to start the petition, they could simply just say, I would like to reduce the number of, or petition the council to place on the ballot, reducing the council members from nine to seven in a at-large and ward plan, right? That's all they would have to have. Then we would come up with the ballot language. But if the council wants to move forward with this, staff would recommend having the actual ballot language on the petition.
This has been thought of several times, hasn't gone. I haven't had anybody beating down my door saying, we need to change it. More streamlined, okay, but you don't have anybody here asking for that. Has anybody had a phone call to say that we need, we need less wards?
I've had lots of discussions with people about having less wards.
All over town, or just one ward?
All over town.
All over town, well, evidently.
And people of a lot of different backgrounds, because I think it's, I think, to me, I'm not just, like, I want to host that, I want to have that discussion with people and see what they think, because I don't want to come and just propose this because it's my opinion. I'm, I'm proposing this out of many 10 years of experience living in Keokuk and having a lot of conversations around these things.
Well, I've got 24 years of experience on the council.
I understand.
So when you reduce it down from 10, you're getting, you're getting less opinions because you've got less people here. It's not going to save me money, I mean, $200 a month, you can do with all of us, you would never know. But you, you do need the opinions of people out there, and they're not, they're not coming forward. I mean, I, Mr. Nine, he's wrote, and the first thing I told him, you need to call every council person you need to call. Because I've had incidents where I've, I've argued for a, a streetlight for two years. They never, never, they give me excuse after excuse after excuse, and finally, the mayor told the lady, come up here, she'd come up here and talked, and we passed it that night. But I talked, I talked about it for two years.
New member, and to me, it seems that seven would be more ideal with two at-large, and with a stronger emphasis on attendance, I think, would make people happy. I've heard discussion that the, the lack of attendance is kind of troubling.
I think it's good that we all take, give our opinion, but I'm also, I'm going to tell you that if you cut it down, no matter what you cut it down to, you're going to have
I wish we had about 100 Dorothy Cackleys. Come in here and ask all these questions. Keep us on our toes.
From, from a citizen's perspective, who has been motivated to get involved in the community, get involved in the government, and express opinions, I would say that it isn't a matter of reducing the number of people on the city council, it is getting the word out there. Because I, I don't, I don't hear anything from anybody up here, in the paper, on the radio, anything, encouraging people to get involved, right? That, that's where you start in getting people to come forward. I've been encouraged to get involved because I've been paying attention to what's been going on, okay? I, I, I think, I think the citizens of this town would be better served in the, the council promoting people getting involved, and, and it being put out there in, in the public eye, what the requirements are, more transparency into the processes of how things are, are done with, with taking out the papers and, and the, the amount of signatures you have to have, and when they got to be turned in. That, that, there needs to be more expressing that in front of the public, I think. And I, I think that would get, you would get quality people that way, you would get people that are dedicated that way, if they are being encouraged to get involved. You've got council members, for whatever reason, that barely show up, show up once out of, you know, three or four months. When, when, when the citizens see that, it gets frustrating for us. And, and, and I have been motivated to get involved, and I think a lot more people would be motivated to get involved if you guys promoted it more. That's all I have to say. If anybody's got any questions about why I feel that way, I'll field them, I don't care. But it's, it's, that, that's my perspective on why I feel like people don't step up, because it's not being encouraged. Thank you.
Thanks, Dustin. So, anything else, guys?
Just another thought to throw out there, as, as we talk about quality of candidates or getting people to come forward and step up. Historically, over the last 10 years, there have been areas, you know, Ward Two, as an example, that have been more difficult for people to step forward, for whatever the reason might be. Is there, in opposed to changing from nine members, is there a way to just change the shape of the wards that still keeps the populations correctly, but just mixes up the shapes so that that changes?
Certainly.
Might just be overcomplicating, I understand, I'm just.
Certainly, and, and the Iowa law does allow us to change the ward map, so long as we're keeping the same representation and that they're, they're equal. We could certainly do that. What I can tell you is, is it becomes difficult, especially for Ward Two, because Ward Two takes in such a large area. Because you, you can even see on the map here, right, where, you know, we have the, the population density there within the, the core town, right? And then the, the other areas. We could certainly change those lines and shift them up. I mean, I can go up and I can, I can start from scratch and see what I can come up with, what, what could happen from that, because again, the council can change the, the ward map, so long as it's equal representation and not changing the number. You could have council members running against each other, which is one of the concerns when we talked about this before.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to verify that that could be a different option.
Correct.
Think you find yourself, though, in, in iffy waters, though, because then are the, the wards representing neighborhoods that are recognized as neighborhoods, or are they just representing pets? You know what I'm saying? This is that there's certain feelings around neighborhoods and why wards are, are created around those things. So that was one thing, is I don't, I don't want it to look like we're taking a little population out of this ward and then putting it over there just so that we have people we can elect, or that people will want to volunteer.
And, and, and that's what, and what you could run into is wards that look very gerrymandered.
Yeah. That's what I was concerned.
Look, the wards also have to be considered as far as being first in preparation of supervisor ship.
Correct. So what it is, is if we change it, we, we have to do this in conjunction with the counties so that they can draw their supervisor's maps. Thank you. That's a good point.
So I think, I think we've kind of brought out everything that we need to bring out. So this will be on, we need a petition to get it on the ballot, is that what we're waiting on?
Well, if, if the council so desires, we can draw up, the staff can draw up the, the petition and get it out to the public, or council members themselves can draw up a petition and take it out, or any citizen out there that's listening and agrees with changing the number can draw up a petition and submit it.
Or they can draw up a petition to remain the same?
Well, they can choose, like I said, if, if, if somebody out there decides that the at-large, the five, five at-large is the best way to go, they can draw up a petition that way. And if they can get 156 signatures, it gets put on the, on, on the ballot. You know, so, and, and it has been pointed out that technically, you could put two different versions on the ballot, and then people would pick which one.
So, and then the other question is, this does not have to come before the council on the next ele, I mean, the next council meeting?
No, it, it, it doesn't come before the council. This is, this is something that if you want us to do, for staff to take the lead on, staff will take the lead on it. Once the petition is returned, the council would have to take action to submit it to the county auditor.
Okay.
Oh, so if the, if a citizen, for example, wants to create a petition, do they need to take it to the city before they go back to the county? Or is this your understanding for writing?
Well, they would have to submit it to us, and we would have to submit it to the county by September 21st.
Right, but I mean, let's say that, like, someone who's listening is like, oh, I want to do a petition. They can start a petition without coming to the people.
Correct.
But they can draw up signatures and then bring it to the city.
Correct. They do not have to have the city council's permission to do this. This is something that they can do on their own. And again, the language doesn't have to be the ballot, the, the exact ballot language, they just have to specify the number, what the representation plan they want to look at. So if they want five wards, two at-large, right, that has to be on the ballot, that they're petitioning the, the council to do this type of, of representation plan.
And for clarification purposes, just because we got the petition about the turbine, these have got to be citizens of Keokuk, they've got to be a voting citizen of Keokuk, and they've got to have their address to prove that, is that correct?
They, they have to have, so what it is, is they have to be a qualified elector, which means they're
Qualified to vote.
Eighteen, eighteen and eligible to vote, right? Does not mean they have to be registered to vote.
Right.
They must be a resident of, of Keokuk, and they have to provide their address and phone number.
Okay.
Okay. Question. If a private individual, and you said they submit that to the auditor?
They submit it to the city.
Submit it, submit it to the city, and then we submit it to the auditor.
Okay. So I was concerned about the expense for going on the ballot.
It would be, it would, there would be an, an extra cost because we're putting more on the ballot. We still have to pay for our portion of the ballot when it's printed, and so there would be an additional cost. What I, how much that cost is, I can't tell you. It'd probably only be a couple hundred bucks.
So the, the question, though, is also, legally, if we receive a petition that has verified signatures of 10% of the population.
10% of those voting in the last.
Those voting in the last election, we cannot deny application to the Lee County election, or the election. So we have to take that forward. We legally can't say that we won't do that.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, also, one thing, the fewer the number, the, the fewer number of people it takes to gum up the works. The fewer the number up here, the fewer the number you have to have to gum up the works.
So I think we've asked every question we can possibly think of. I think probably we're going to adjourn and head home, and we'll see what happens with this, if it gets on the ballot, it gets on the ballot.